And spoke to it on her vacation. Thank you again, Jessica, for that. Don Meesmer with the city, Mayor Miller, and Dan War out of the port had discussed it previously, and they came into a consensus around how to update it. Since the document was signed in 2018, they're doing an addendum to both showcase short, medium, long-term goals and to update on how far they have come. And then looking at doing an update in April, possibly to the council, no more than 30 minutes.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, Mayor Gare.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Mayor Miller.
Eventually, you're going to get, eventually, you're going to get a soda fine.
So Mayor Miller, Chief Harris, and Chief Floyd, and then also Mr. Carter and myself, we had our public safety meeting March 1st. Update from the fire department, there's an open recruitment happening, and they're kind of trying to, there's about five positions that have been, we've been down five positions. One is returning to full duty, one's starting, one's in the academy, and we're working on filling the other positions. That being said, we are a little over, we have a lot of overtime for the first couple of months, but that should be balanced out because of those open positions. We've got about seven volunteers that are going to start their training to try to build up that program again. We're working on a safer grant. We had three people be promoted to captains, so congratulations to those folks. And the cool thing is, we have an older fire truck, and our Public Works Ops Manager Will is working with the fire department to do a retrofit it into a hybrid wildland and rescue truck. So it's a, it's a truck we've had for 20 years. It's not really going to function in that capacity anymore, but it could be really great for our forest lands if that ever becomes an issue, and it can hold about 300 gallons of water. So that's exciting that we're working together, or different departments. And then again, Station 3, they're working on the wetland land survey and cultural, cultural resource study for that project going forward. When it comes to the police department, Chief Floyd is deep into the legislative session, working on priorities and, and how we can improve some of the new state regulation and deal with some of the unintended consequences. So we're really pleased that he's lending his voice to that with our state-level representation. And then we've got one officer who's hired and is going to, is about in Week 4 of the academy, and a couple of other positions that are open, but other than that, everything's going quite smoothly.
Thank you. And just to make sure it's clear, it's not the antique fire truck that's being turned into a brush land. It's one of our older engines, in case, in case anybody's familiar with the antique fire truck. Okay, thank you for that report. Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee met last week. We met with Tina Tate, who's the former director of Friendship House over in Mount Vernon. We chatted about Friendship House. We chatted about Burlington's First Step Center, which is run by Friendship House. We'd previously met with the current interim director of Friendship House and talked about the First Step Center, but we wanted to get Tina Tate's take on it as well. Tina is the current director of Skagit Habitat for Humanity, and she was also joined in our meeting by Alan Workman, who's Vice President of Skagit Habitat. As we've talked about before, there are a couple of city-owned parcels on West 5th Street, and we've talked with Habitat for Humanity about how we might partner with them to get at least four units of housing built affordable to working families. And so we explored that a little bit with both of them, and there will be more to come in the near future about that.
Thank you. Public Works Committee. Ms. Moulton.
Mayor Miller, thank you. We had our meeting just prior to this one, and it was Councilmember Young, Councilmember Walters, and I, and an all-star collection of staff representing different departments. The first subject we talked about was the outfall that's been on all of our minds as that process moves forward. We have our first bid, and that's in the packet, and we have Rob Webb here tonight to present a PowerPoint on that process. And so he will fill us in on all those good details. The second thing we talked about is stormwater, and there are two things coming to council this year. The first is a 2019 Stormwater Management Manual update with additional wetland protections and a couple of other items, and that will be coming to us to adopt, and that's fairly straightforward. Ms. Hennebert, our stormwater manager, will talk to us about that. And then we'll also talk about a source control program for existing development, which means, how do we keep businesses from adding stormwater and pollutants through their stormwater to our environment? So that's a process that's happening with the county, and she'll tell us all about that, too, but pretty interesting stuff. And then lastly, we talked about the water treatment plant and our excellent water quality there, and how to keep it that way going forward. So we'll be looking at deep analysis of our water quality and how to keep it as excellent as it is. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, rolling along to item number four. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public that wish to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to comment on ordinance 4012 Stormwater Management Plan or display of Russian flags, you can wait for later, but if you're here to talk about something else, this is the time. All right, I think everybody's here for all those other awesome topics. Let me make sure there isn't anybody on, online that wants to just comment. Okay, nothing seen, no hands raised. We'll get, get to your public comments when we get to those items on the agenda. All right, we're on to item number five, Consent Agenda, Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young to approve Consent Agenda Items A through D. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to public hearings. We're going to continue the public hearing for ordinance 4012, amending chapter 1012 regarding stopping, standing, and parking. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Buckmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the audience, members of the public. For your consideration, this evening is a revision to our parking code. We have in your packet ordinance 4012. We got started a couple of weeks ago, and it's ended up taking a, taking a step back and refining some parts of it, but we're ready to go this evening. There are really three revisions, three additions that we're going to talk about this evening. One deals with the Kiwanis Park, park, parking time, the parking lot restriction, time restriction. The other one deals with the loading zone on the end of, where am I at? There are 30th Street and W Avenue. There's a loading zone down there we're going to recommend. And why didn't I put those two together? And the other one deals with parking, parking on the south side of 6th Street. All three of these have been in consideration for a long time. Some of them perhaps more than a year, but with COVID and remote working and, and the lack of traffic safety committees, we, they're just now coming, coming before council. And I know that there's been some discussion about, you know, any number of parking issues around town that we really want to get solved and settled and discussed, and we're happy to do that. We're recommending just focusing on these three that have really kind of been in the, in the hopper for a while and move forward with those three, and then we'll, we'll come back and revisit the whole, the rest of them later. Okay, so the Kiwanis Park, two-hour parking, let's start with that one. Basically, the, the current signage there at the park is, it's signed for four-hour parking. Don't tell anybody, but that's not in our code anywhere, and so it's really not, not enforceable, okay? So we really want to put something in the code that makes it enforceable, and two hours is really, was what the Traffic Safety Committee is, is recommending. That's kind of consistent with other parking restrictions around town.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I won't tell anybody.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But I think, I think we've talked to our city attorney about this before, but it would be helpful if parking signs, other signs around town were labeled with the municipal code section, rather than the ordinance number, because ordinances change. And so the result of this ordinance will result in a number of new signs. It'd be great if we could adopt that as our standard, labeling it with AMC and then the, the number. And then everybody should be able to look that up really easily.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Thanks.
Yeah, it's helpful, and there's probably a couple other small areas that are secret. We haven't tied the code properly to a sign, so we've been looking at that for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you. The, the problem we're trying to solve here is that this parking lot gets inundated with, with ferry parking. Certainly during the haulout and, and kind of all year long, it's a, it's a very convenient place to park and walk down to the ferry. We encourage ferry users. We like, we like folks coming over. We like, you know, we like that, but, but not at the, not at the detriment of having folks be able to enjoy that particular park there. And there are large parking lots that are available here for the, for the ferry, right, for the ferry haulout folks. There's two of these, two parking lots there. So that's the problem we're trying to solve with that one.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Buckmeyer, just a quick question for you about that. I just thought it would benefit not only me, but I'm hoping the audience, you know, the suggestion is that in the large parking lot, there's ample space for parking, so it's not necessary to crowd out this parking lot for the Kiwanis Park. Am I correct on that?
That's, that's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Oftentimes, we find that the street is full of cars, the Kiwanis parking lot's full of cars, and there's empty spaces in the county-provided parking lot for the, for the ferry. I'm going to take these out of order because I don't like jumping back and forth between the two maps. The other item for your consideration is the 6th Street parking restriction. We call it the 6th Street story here. This street section is also impacted by ferry traffic. It's very convenient to pull right up there and hop on the ferry and, and come back several days later, right, or a long period of time later at the, and that really severely impacts the folks that, that live right there on that side of the road, or that side of the street. A number of years ago, I don't have the day in front of me, we did establish this exact same residential parking restriction on the north side. That's the little yellow area there, for this, this exact same reason. We just want to duplicate that on the, on the, on the south side of 6th Street. And it's similar to the way we've got it at the high school, where you've got a little placard you hang off your, in, somewhere in your car or something like that, and, and it, and that gives you the, you know, the ability to park there and, and not get a, not get towed or not get a ticket, so. And the third thing for your consideration is the 15-minute parking unloading, loading, unloading zone down at the end of W. This is basically there for the marina or the dock parking. You know, folks can pull up there and unload their vehicles and then, and then, and then go find parking somewhere else. But right now, there's, that's being, you know, folks are taking advantage of that and parking there for long periods of time and, and thwarting what we want to do there. There's a number of emails, correspondence, whatnot in your, in your packets, and I know that there's folks here tonight that want to, want to speak to this also, and I doubt whether any of them are dealing with this map, but I bet you a lot of them are dealing with that map. So, Mayor, it's yours.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I know there's a few folks that are here to speak about permit parking, and I think they're one, two, three, four, five, six on permit parking. So feel free to, I guess I'll call you out as you're signed up, but I'd, I'll try to limit, if you could limit your time to five minutes, and if you could also, oh, three minutes. Sorry, thank you. Three minutes is what council tells me, so I was trying to be generous. But three minutes it is. And, and also, you know, if you're saying exactly what somebody else spoke, you can just say, hey, I agree with them, and, and I think council will understand that. So first up, I've got Bashi Morris.
Good evening, Bashi. Can I take this off?
Yes, you can. We're far enough away.
Thank you. Bashi Morris, 1618 7th Street. First, I have to apologize. I misspoke about some misinformation that I had gleaned by printing my own copy of the Anacortes Municipal Code. A week ago, I spoke about G Avenue having no parking on either side between 7th and 8th. It was in the code. There are no signs. It is not proposed, but I had no way of knowing what is currently being proposed and what is something that has no signage and, you know, was a bete noir a long time ago. Thank you. So I would like to speak about the 6th Street parking. I, I think that there are some misrepresentations on that map to begin with. The blue stripe that's furthest to the west, Dale Fowler has a curb cut, and there are two parking places to the east of him. To the west of him is the big greenhouse. They have a curb cut with a double driveway. And then to the west of him is a house that has a garage. The only two parking places that are there currently that are legal to park in are right in front of Dale Fowler's house, and then there is a bulb bump out. So that looks like there's a lot of opportunity for parking. It's not the case. Also, on the next piece of road, there are a couple of, there's one curb cut for a double garage, I mean, a double parking spot. These are history things. I don't know if the Public Works and these traffic and safety ambles down there, but I've lived there for a long time, and I've seen the changes come with the ferry, and we call it the ferry troubles. They've been there for a very long time, for 50-plus years. When the building was rebuilt, that was in 2010. That is when they rebuilt, the county was made to rebuild and re-engineer 6th Street, widening it so that there would be a ferry line, the resident parking on the north side of the street, and then a traffic turning lane. The yellow stripe there also is a little bit deceiving. There are only four to five parking spaces available there right now for permit parking by the residents. There are two different driveways cut there. There are only two homes on that piece of street. Just an FYI. So this is not about neighbor pitting against neighbor. I live on 7th. I've got my neighbors, Warren, across the street, Vicky and John that built a house and live on the end of the street, and Luke that lives across the alley from me, and a neighbor up the street. We know each other. We've met each other. We know their kids' names, and we use each other's trash pails and do neighborly things. What I wanted to do is create a little bit of a history about what goes on down here. The reason that there is a permit parking on the north side of the street is that the one home, Jerry Liggett, has no garage. She has a single-car drive-in. She, and then when the street was widened, she lost anything between the sidewalk and the street more than three feet wide. I mean, three to four feet wide. So, you know, that's kind of a problem. And then on this blue strip of 6th Street on the south side of those neighbors and houses, there are actually only one family that's been there any length of time, and that's Luke. Other homes were built in 2014. One family moved in, in 2020. One family located there in 2018, and two located there in 2021. We're not talking about a long-term disadvantage. Of the homes on that street, the one curb cut has two parking spaces. The one newest on the easternmost side has off-street paved parking as well as a curb cut on J Avenue. Some of the homes that you don't know about on 7th Street are built on 30-foot-wide lots, as was done back when this was a lumber town, and a lot of the fish people that worked in town or worked at the lumber mills used whatever scrap lumber there was. So there's at least two on 7th and one on 6th on the next block between J and K. This is history that needs to be considered. There are people that are also disadvantaged when the ferry goes down. The ferry's gone down for maintenance many times, and a lot of us don't have a curb or a gutter, and so our yards get pretty well mashed up by people parking because they have to park. When the ferry goes down, I have friends on Gwemas, and I say park under my deck behind my house so I don't have to climb my stairs. Most of us would not choose to climb stairs with children, strollers, or groceries. So most of these people that will speak actually do have parking level access to their homes.
Okay.
But they don't have a place for their company to come.
So, so we're going to give them an opportunity to speak also?
They will.
We, we, we are giving you five minutes, although I-
Okay, thank you. I would just strongly urge that the council members consider data for their analysis, not emotion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, John Stables. And I think you're going to turn the microphone on, and we should be able to hear you just fine.
Let's try that.
Yeah, gotcha.
I'm John Stables.
But you'll have to hold the microphone up a little closer. There you go.
We're the people who live on the east corner of this, the block under discussion. We had a, we have two entrances to that place because the emergency people wanted us to do that. We have an ADU that's on the 6th Street side, and so the entrance would be right where this parking we're talking about is. The entrance that we use is on J. So we built that house specifically to be accessible, and we're at the ADU to somebody who needs that kind of accommodation. The logical parking for them, if they're going to be not having to climb a hill, would be to be able to park on 6th right in front of this building. Getting across that street in a wheelchair is not safe. I can attest to that. But making this change that's proposed would relieve the need for people to cross the street in the middle of the block both ways. So I believe it would actually be an advantage, a safety advantage for everybody using that street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I have Vicky Stables next.
Vicky Stables. I can still stand, so I will.
And a little bit closer to the microphone. You can bend that, you can bend it up and then make sure it's, it's on. Yeah, there you go. And you can take your mic. Sure.
We do have off-street parking. We have five off-street parking spaces because we, we planned it that way. We know what that neighborhood is like. We're delighted to live there. We don't need the parking on the street, and we're still very much in favor of it. It's, yeah, the haulout, everyone knows what parking is like during the haulout. For, I'm sure, at least three blocks around the ferry, it's, it's impossible. But for us, it's not just the haulout. It's all of summer. It's every weekend, year-round, and any holiday, more days than not, you can't park on the street on that block. If you have somebody over for dinner, they can't park there. It's, it's rough. We knew that going in, but things can change and things can be accommodated, and this seems like a terrific safety fix that we would greatly appreciate. On the Kiwanis parking, can I address that as well?
Sure.
Again, I can walk to the park. That's pretty easy, and I do, and it's a marvelous park. And it breaks my heart to see people drive through there, and there's no parking, and they leave. And I think people who don't, who aren't as fortunate as I do to live so close should be able to use that park. And I understand that most of our parks don't have parking restrictions, and I'm assuming it's because they don't need it that nobody's complained about it. And I think these are terrific ideas. I commend the city staff for addressing these issues, and I approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Warren Tesler.
Thank you. Warren Tesler, 1613 6th Street. Mayor Miller and Council. You know, ferry traffic on 6th Avenue is a fact of life, for better or for worse. Although I thought last year when, or a year ago, when the house next door to us in the corner, 6th and I went up for sale, the real estate listing discussed the opportunity to observe ferry traffic out your front window as a feature. I thought that was a bit bold. But anyway, as, as has been said, you know, and my neighbor Luke Russell has sent you an email with an extensive description of the issue and, and some of the trade-offs and, and whatever, so I'm not going to repeat, repeat all of that. I think he laid that out very well. But the fact is that no matter how long any of us have lived on that, in those particular couple of blocks, the, the continuous parking there has been an issue pretty much as long as the ferry's been there. As I walked down here tonight, there were four cars parked in that block. They've been there all day. They may have been there all weekend. I don't really track it that much, but, but they have nothing to do with, with the folks that live there. And yes, I can park in my driveway. I can park in my garage. But if we invite more than one guest over, we have to warn them. You may have to go over to the Kiwanis Park, Park, parking lot or park around the block because odds of finding a space in front, especially in the summertime, are tough. And it's, you know, that's part of the use and enjoyment of our property in our neighborhood is when we invite people over that, you know, they should be expect to, be, expect to be able to park in front. I mean, you can do that almost anywhere else in town. So it's just, it's just time to, to organize this and, and, and bring it to heel so that we can do that. I would offer that, you know, when the ferry's down for maintenance, either, you know, the routine maintenance or whatever, you know, I'd be up for covering those signs and whatever. I mean, that's a time when every space is needed, so I, you know, I could certainly see doing that. We're not looking to block people out permanently and make life difficult. But as has been pointed out, there's a large lot right there that's not utilized fully. I've, you know, again, today is maybe 20% full, and, and I think the idea of enforcing the parking at the, at the park is good. Again, that's routinely full of, not full, but there, there can be anywhere from four to seven cars there for overnight, long periods of time over the weekend that are obviously Gwemas residents. And, and it's just not that different to parking lot and, and walk over. So I encourage your adoption of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the permit parking comment, Barbara Larson, I think it is. Sorry. Okay, thank you very much. Sounds like they got, they all got your points across, perhaps? Okay. And next is Luke Russell.
Luke Russell, 1611 6th Street, Mayor, City Council, and neighbors. I really appreciate y'all being here. I'm kind of, kind of feel really good about this. I haven't seen you guys out here. So I had a big, long speech for y'all, but I think it's been pretty much covered. I kind of put this whole thing together in 2016 with a guy named Eric. He used to work here, and him and I went back and forth. But I think it was even being talked about in like 2010 when my house is being built. So it's been around a while. The bottom line with this, everyone, is that we're not looking for this to be neighbor against neighbor. You know, I really appreciate them all being here tonight. I think that the way that Fred has set this up and the way the, the county already has ample parking, we're really just looking to do, to change the beh- parking, we're really just looking to do, to change the behavior of ferry parkers and get them to use their ferry designated parking, which is their main lot off of Sixth Street, which is oftentimes totally empty, and it's lit, there's cameras there, it's a great spot to park. I've measured it. It's almost within feet of the same distances in front of my house, but the perception is that our parking is just, you know, you just pop in and you're down the ferry. And then also the ferry lot down below. And also, that doesn't get talked about a lot, is this right here. That's, that's the number three in my email. That's the, I talked about the 1500 block. That's just against that brick wall that abuts the parking lot, so there's no residences there. It's a great spot to park also, and it makes it so that ferry riders don't actually have to cross the street to get to the ferry. We've kind of seen this as a, and again, we've, I know we've discussed a lot of this, but, and I'm a former Navy guy, I just like to talk. I know Mr. Miller, you understand that, so feel free to cut me off at any point. But primarily, it's a safety issue. As the neighborhood has grown, we have quite the hodgepodge of elderly folks and very young children, and oftentimes we're forced to park far away if we can't sometimes get into our alley because of whatever's going on, or guests. And it's just, there's been some scary moments where little kids are bolting out of those yellow spots right there, and you've got ferry traffic coming off the ferry, turning east on Sixth Street and accelerating at poor sight. So we just feel like it's a minor safety issue. However, we feel like with the alternative parking in the neighborhood that it's honestly going to be a win-win. I know there's some concern from neighbors that it would get pushed to their parts of the neighborhood, but I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem. I think there's, there's ample stuff out there. I think that was all I had. Yeah, I've also got, I sent you all my email with the petition. I've got hard copies of those. I'm happy to put those in a public record when we're done, or you can just have what you have. So just let me know what you'd like to do. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else want to comment on our parking, our ordinance 4012? Anybody online want to comment on this ordinance? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Anybody else here in the council chambers on the parking changes? Okay, over to council for discussion.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
I tend to think that this is pretty straightforward and long overdue. I would encourage us to pursue a couple of ancillary pieces to this. One is the signage, as we've just talked about throughout the city. I think that we need a complete review. I actually think Mr. Ludeman might have mentioned he's already working on that. It'd be helpful for me and assumedly council if we maintained on our interactive map in our GIS system where the parking restrictions are, so we can bring it up at any time and so we can, we can keep track of those things. Throughout town, though, we need to make sure that signs match the code and that they're labeled with the code. Just as an example, school zones are in our code as either in force when the lights are flashing or in force for various times of day, and they're different. And you can't ticket somebody for something that's not in the code based on the sign. It needs to be based on the code. And I think it was last year, there was some suggestion, we're going to take some of these signs down and swap them out with some different signs. No, can't do that. Got to change the code first. And so we do have some, I think, work to be done in building a culture of making sure that we're working off the code and we're supplementing that with signage rather than the reverse. I think it's useful to have these regulations to guide people to do the right thing, even if they're not enforced, but I would also like to see them enforced. Ultimately, I think, as we've talked about in our planning committee, although I don't know that this has enjoyed a lot of support from the other members of the planning committee, I think that we do need a dedicated parking enforcement officer with a limited commission from the police department. Mount Vernon has that. Tickets in Mount Vernon are not onerous, but they do happen, and it helps with things like cars parked across sidewalks, cars parked on sides of the street where the street cleaner is coming through that morning. It helps with vehicles parked in residential areas that aren't moving because they're owned or operated by homeless people. It can help with a lot of those different things, including maybe downtown parking, but it's not something that we've sufficiently explored, and I think it's a required corollary to this ordinance. If we don't have enforcement, and we don't, I mean, as was pointed out, the Kiwanis park parking doesn't line up with the code today, we're not really accomplishing the goal. And it seems very clear to me that enforcement is going to be required in this particular area on Sixth Street, among others.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to sort of echo part of what Mr. Walters said, but also, you know, I think that, and there is an issue, but there's also a solution. And I think that at the end of the day, there's ample parking for our guests, meaning of the ferry system, if they were to sort of use that parking lot that's being minimally used, if I'm correct. And so I just think that there are things that we can begin to do right now, and I've read all of your emails. I've listened intently to every syllable coming off your lips to make sure I'm understanding what's going on, and so I'm sort of ready to move forward, you know, in lieu of any other conversations from you guys.
Mayor Miller?
Before we do that, I think I need to close the public hearing, and I'm going to do that. And now Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I'd like to commend staff for their work on this and Mr. Buckenmyer for your presentation. Thank you to the neighbors for, for sharing your knowledge with us also. That's been super helpful. And with that, I move to adopt ordinance number 4012, amending chapter 10.12, stopping, standing, and parking.
Okay, motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Walters to approve ordinance 4021. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the public coming to talk to us, and, because that's how we really get to know what's happening in your neighborhood. So thank you for taking the time out to, to let us know. Okay, we're moving on to other business, item seven and 7A, 2022 Stormwater Management Program Plan. Mr. Buckenmyer, I think you're going to introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, and members of the audience. Very simple. I just want to introduce Diane Hennebert. She's our stormwater program manager. Ms. Hennebert has really transformed our stormwater program from, from what it used to be to what it is today. It's, it's, it's fun to work with her. She's excited about stormwater. She's dedicated to improving our program. She's, she's passionate about stormwater. It's fun to work with somebody that, that likes their job as, as much as I do. So with that, I'm just really going to introduce Diane and let her take it from here. Thanks.
All right. I won't add to any of those awesome accolades, but I agree, so, thank you.
Thank you all. Pull up my presentation for you. All right. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. It's my honor to present to you our...
Yeah, there we go. A little bit.
There we go. Not better?
Yeah, much.
All right. Our 22, 2022 Stormwater Management Program Plan. City is under a municipal stormwater permit, and our stormwater management program aids in our compliance with the requirements. So I'll discuss these permit requirements and how we're meeting them in 2022. So also be an opportunity for public comment. The stormwater is rain that runs off our rooftops, our yards, parking lots, and streets. It washes what it touches into our streams and bays via the storm system. Includes things like pesticide, oil, cigarette butts, pet waste, sediment. All of these pollutants create polluted stormwater that can damage salmon habitat, pollute shellfish beds, degrade water quality, and cause ripple effects that affect many other species in the Salish Sea. Stormwater has been recognized as the leading cause of water pollution in Washington State. So the Clean Water Act was passed in 1972 with two primary goals: eliminate the discharge of pollutants in the nation's waters and achieve water quality levels that are fishable and swimmable. The Clean Water Act created NPDS, which stands for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and that created a whole series of permits. Here in Washington State, permitting authority was granted to the Department of Ecology for stormwater permits. So that's the federal level. Here at the local level, this is what it looks like. Got the Clean Water Act creating NPDS, which trickles down to the Department of Ecology in our state. There's a variety of NPDS permits for both the public and private sector. My focus is on the municipal stormwater permit, which is in the center in red, and the associated requirements. Under our permit, our stormwater management program must include the following minimum control measures, which are listed across the bottom: stormwater planning, education and outreach, public involvement and participation, mapping and documentation, illicit discharge, detection and elimination, controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment, and construction sites, operations and maintenance, and a source control program. Not listed here but included in a different section of the permit is also a requirement to either implement a monitoring and assessment program or contribute to a fund for regional monitoring. So those are a lot of requirements, and how do we get all of this done here in the city? I'm a division of one, but I do not work alone. I've had great cooperation and collaboration with the other departments within this city. A few examples include working with the engineering department on permitting, design, and construction. I work with our street crews documenting maintenance and any issues that come up with our storm system and record-keeping to show everything that we've done. I work with the building inspectors to ensure contractor compliance with stormwater best management practices on construction sites. I work with the city attorney for code amendments. Stormwater requirements overlap into nearly every department in the city. So we'll start looking at what some of these requirements are. The goals of stormwater planning are to ensure that stormwater management needs and the protection of our receiving waters are part of the planning process and are implemented appropriately. We are going to continue to require low-impact development as the preferred and commonly-used approach to site development, and in this permit cycle, we have a new requirement for stormwater management action planning, which involves assessment of watershed basins and receiving waters to prioritize locations for focused stormwater efforts, such as retrofits to our, the storm system, or targeted education and outreach. For 2022, we'll do our annual assessment of any barriers to low-impact development in the city. We'll submit our watershed inventory and our receiving water prioritization to the Department of Ecology. Next up is public education and outreach. The city is part of a highly-successful regional education and outreach group that consists of the Skagit Conservation District and the other local NPDS permities, which are Skagit County, Mount Vernon, Burlington, and Seidro Woolley. By working together, we're able to provide much higher-quality programming and more programming. Some of the things that we provide include the Backyard Conservation Stewardship Short Course, Watershed Masters Volunteer Training Program, a workshop for privately-owned stormwater facility maintenance, Skagit Stream Team, and we track behavior change and use surveys to measure the understanding and adoption of these ideas. Beyond this group, we also work in schools. When COVID willing, I've joined the Green Club at the high school, and the Conservation District also takes their EnviroScape model and teaches elementary school students about watersheds and stormwater. I'm looking forward to resuming doing outreach at community events like the Energy Fair and Kids Are Best Fest and the Waterfront Festival. And we are currently midway through construction of a rain garden at Mount Erie Elementary School. It's a partnership between the city, the schools, the Northwest Straits Foundation, and Holly Frontier, and I'm really looking forward to the completion of that and opportunity to use that as education and outreach for the public, and also do a rain garden curriculum with the students at the elementary school. The final piece of education outreach is so exciting that it gets its very own slide, and that is the completion of the City Hall Low-Impact Development Demonstration Project, which was just finished this past winter. It includes two bioswales, pedestrian bulbouts using permeable pavers, and a modular wetland, which is at the south end of Q Avenue, so it's not visible in the big picture. It's a fantastic opportunity to show members of the public and business owners some of the low-impact development options available. Everything from small footprint installations, like the modular wetland, which is kind of in the center at the bottom, to stormwater treatment that can double as landscaping, such as the bioswales. There are a ton of opportunities out there. I've already had the opportunity to give several tours, and the feedback has been very positive. Public involvement in the stormwater program is also really important. For the 2022 Stormwater Management Program Plan, I have it up on the website, open for public comment. I emailed it directly to interested parties, asking for their comments, and I'm here tonight presenting to you, which is also an opportunity for public comment. My information is on the stormwater website, and I'm always interested in hearing from citizens, organizations, and businesses about what their concerns are or what they'd like to see here in the city. I will finalize the 2022 Stormwater Management Program Plan this month and submit it with our 2021 Annual Report to the Department of Ecology, and then that will be posted on our website for the public as well. Our permit has requirements for mapping and documentation. I'm happy to say that the city has already implemented a comprehensive mapping program. It includes our conveyance infrastructure, treatment and flow control facilities, outfalls, our receiving waters, drainage areas, land uses, streams, wetlands, and other components. This connects to a database with information on stormwater infrastructure as well as development information for those drainage basins, which is really useful. We also have our Cartograph Asset Management Program, which allows for detailed information on our stormwater assets, such as catch basins and pipes and ponds, as well as current inspection and maintenance activities for each of these assets. Illicit discharges is a really serious problem within the stormwater community. The city already has an ordinance that prohibits non-stormwater discharges to our storm system. It's section 1830. And so it's a really important piece of my job is to provide education to the businesses, to the public, and to staff within the city about what illicit discharges are, why they matter, how to report them, and how to prevent them. I do this by publicizing our spill hotline and our online reporting for spills or illicit discharges. In A-Town is our town, and the Anacortes is American. I have illicit discharge magnets that I hand out at community events, and also other illicit discharge materials that I'll hand out to the community. And I continue to provide refresher training for city staff to recognize and report these spills. I also coordinate regularly with the Port of Anacortes, the Samish Indian Nation, and the Friends of Skagit Beaches on suspected illicit discharge concerns. Stormwater issues have really changed the way we look at development. Our permit includes stringent requirements regarding the incorporation of low-impact development, erosion-controlled best management practices, inspection and reporting for both public and private projects, and this is all to reduce pollutants and stormwater runoff, both in the short term and the long term. The biggest items under controlling runoff are the stormwater site plan review, so an applic- So, an applicant submits their project to us, and we ensure that it follows low-impact development principles and that it meets the minimum requirements listed in our permit for new development and redevelopment. We do inspections prior to the start of construction, during construction, and post-construction. And we require maintenance agreements to ensure the long-term maintenance of privately-owned permanent stormwater facilities. The big item in 2022 under Controlling Runoff will be the adoption of the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. This manual provides stormwater requirements, particularly in regards to site plan review for development projects, low-impact development requirements, stormwater management on construction sites, and maintenance standards for stormwater facilities. Our operations and maintenance crews work really hard to maintain our storm system. They're on a two-year cycle to provide inspection and cleaning to over 4,200 catch basins within the city. They do annual inspections and maintenance if needed to publicly-owned stormwater facilities, which includes 64 public ponds and 41 publicly-owned vaults. They maintain over 80 miles of storm pipe and 50 miles of ditches. They also have a rigorous street sweeping program that reduces the amount of street waste that is entering our storm system and then our waterways.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Henner, but I find those facts fascinating, and I wonder if they're like on a page on our website that people could go look, because I think that information is so cool.
I believe it is on the stormwater webpage.
Okay.
But it probably should be posted more prominently, because it is a lot of work. And they do a fantastic job, so they deserve as much credit as we can possibly give them. They're also out there during the storms, inspecting these flow-control facilities to make sure that they're functioning properly and preventing flooding in the city. And then they use the Cartograph Asset Management System to track everything they're doing, which is really useful. I mean, I can hop on and I can tell you what they did to the storm system today, and it's great to have real-time updates of what's going on out there. Source Control Program is a new requirement under our current permit cycle, and this will really ramp up in the coming year. So, the Source Control Program is really focused on the prevention and reduction of pollution at the source. So, this is for existing businesses. It's much more effective to remove contaminants at the source than try and clean them out of the stormwater later. We'll be working with local businesses and industries to improve practices to reduce pollution. A lot of it will be implementing best management practices, often as easy as dumpster maintenance. Does your dumpster leak? Is it next to the catch basin? Do you close the lid on it? Those three things can make a really big difference for our storm system. It also includes things like chemical storage. Do you have secondary containment for any chemicals that are stored outdoors? What are your cleaning practices outdoors? Structural controls, like installing an oil-water separator or something along those lines that tend to be more expensive, will only be required if they're unable to address the pollution issues with best management practices. So, in 2022 is when we'll really be getting this going. The first item will be the program structure. We're looking at creating a regional program instead of each jurisdiction creating their own. The Skagit Public Health Department already has an existing Source Control Program. It focuses on businesses that are small quantity generators of hazardous waste. So, we would combine with their program and have one program that encompasses all of this. The good thing about this is they already have existing relationships with a lot of businesses. We would have consistent messaging and enforcement across the region, and it would be cost savings for all the jurisdictions to be able to pool our money together to create this program. So, coming to council sooner rather than later will be an inter-local agreement to create this program. And then we will be finalizing our inventory database by August 1st and are required to adopt our ordinance, our Source Control Ordinance, requiring these best management practices also by August 1st. And inspections start in January of 2023. The last item is monitoring and assessment. We have two options within the permit. You can pay into a regional program run by the Department of Ecology, or you can run your own program doing sampling and assessment. City has chosen option one, which is significantly cheaper for us. But beyond what we pay into, we also coordinate with the Samish Indian Nation on water quality sampling in and around Fodago Bay. And a little over a year ago, the Friends of Skagit Beaches launched a citizen science program in partnership with the city, monitoring water quality at city outfalls. And that's provided a lot of really useful information for the stormwater program moving So, to refresh your memory, coming before council this year, the really big items will be the adoption of the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington, which needs to be adopted no later than June 30th, and the founding of the Source Control Program, which will include the inter-local agreement, the business inventory, and the adoption of the municipal code. So, in closing, I just want to say the City of Anacortes is fully committed to maintaining a strong stormwater management program, remaining in compliance with our NPDS permit and protecting water quality in the Salish Sea. It's been my pleasure to present to you tonight. Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much for that great presentation, and we're very fortunate to have you on Team COA. And I appreciate you acknowledging the fact, although you're of Division of One, you get a lot of help from the other departments, so I appreciate all that cooperation. Okay, let's open it up for any public, members of the public that wants to comment on the Stormwater Management Program Plan. How about online? I'm looking for hands being raised. Don't see any. Okay, council, your turn. Any comments from council? It was a great presentation, so it's okay. You don't have to say anything. If you just liked the presentation, it's okay to... I have to talk, because apparently I've got to run the meeting. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 7B. Contract Award Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Relocation: Marine Phase. Mr. Buckmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public and the audience again. For your consideration this evening is a contract award for the outfall, the marine portion of the outfall. We opened the marine proposals last week, and we went through them all, and we're ready to present the refinings of that to you. We've had several city council meetings, Public Works Committee meetings, so I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but I do have Rob Webb of Dalton, Olmsted, and Fogel Land here online this evening. Rob's our project manager, the consultant that's managing this project for us. Just to recap for maybe some folks in the audience that don't know, but there are two phases to this. There's a marine phase and an uplands phase. Tonight, we're recommending awarding the marine phase, and in two weeks, we'll be bringing the upland portion of that to council. A lot of activity late last week. One of the milestones, and Mr. Webb will explain this a little bit better too, is that FEMA has approved our contractor selection process. So, that was a big milestone. Otherwise, I would be standing here with a different recommendation for you. That was a big milestone for us. And with that, I don't know how to get Rob on here. Exit minimized view. How's that? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Buckmeyer. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you.
Very well. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Appreciate your time this evening. Let me bring up a presentation I have here. Hopefully, you can all see my slide okay?
Yeah, we can see it.
Excellent. And so, as Mr. Buckmeyer said, I'm here tonight to give an update on our contractor selection process for the marine phase of the wastewater treatment outfall replacement project. We've already gone through introductions, go through and review our marine contracting method, go through our request for proposals that we issued, our proposal evaluation criteria that we followed, and then the results of that evaluation. If there's any questions along the way, please feel free to jump in. And so, just about a year ago, back on March 22 of 2021, I had the opportunity to present to council again at that time and go through what we had as a planned marine contracting method. And I'm here tonight to say that we have faithfully executed that plan and have gone through the process that was laid out at that time and have a recommendation at this point in time. Back then, we said we were going to go and do a selection process to find the contractor that provided the best value to the city, and that was consistent with the RCWs, and that the method we were going to use was a pre-qualification process where we requested statements of qualifications from potential contractors. From that process of 18 requests, we received six statement of qualifications. From that, we issued an RFP to then get price proposals, and then we were going to go forward and do qualifications based on the scoring, excuse me, based on qualifications and price. And so, true to that, we distributed our RFP to the four firms that were qualified through the statement of qualifications and requested within a format that they all provide technical and cost proposals. And there was a requested format for both of those that they were to follow to provide the necessary information to be able to be evaluated by the project team. We also kept Washington EMD informed of our process. As Fred could previously say, Mr. Buckmeyer, we wanted to make sure that we maintained our eligibility for funding through that program throughout the process. Of our request for proposals, we received three proposals. One of the fourth firms that went through the qualification process and was qualified decided to not submit a proposal due to current market conditions. They basically had enough work that they did not feel they could take on this project also at this time. Both the proposals that were received, they were reviewed and evaluated by the project team using our previously-prepared format, which I'll show you in a minute. One of the three that was received was eliminated because they did not provide the required information or pricing in the format that was required. Five different qualified individuals reviewed the forms, reviewed the proposals that were received. That included the city's project manager, and then four different professional engineers that are involved in various phases of the project, as you can see listed here on the screen. All of these folks have between 10 and 30-plus years of experience in related types of projects and are very familiar with this type of construction here in Puget Sound. Within the RFP, we required that the contractors submitted a number of documents, a number of plans, that described how they were going to do the various technical components of the work. Those are shown here on the screen. And then, within each of those plans, there was a number of technical items that they were to address. And you can see on here the scoring system that was there and the points that were available for each one of those criteria, based on how well the evaluator felt that the contractor addressed that issue. From there, we have an evaluation summary table, and then that brings in both the cost over on the left-hand side, and then the technical proposal scores across the middle from each of the five reviewers, which gives us a technical proposal average. And then, that technical proposal average score, combined with the cost proposal score, gives us the total point score for each of the contractors. And so, each of the reviewers went through the proposals that were received, technical proposals, and scored them based upon the criteria that was previously discussed and what the contractor submitted in their proposals. And you can see here the relative scores from each of the reviewers for the contractor, American Construction, one of the two complete proposals that was received. And you can see at the end, the average score for that contractor was 16 out of a possible maximum of 50. The second proposal was received from Pacific Pile and Marine. Same process was followed. And you can see here, the average score from the five reviewers of their submitted materials was a 47. Those scores were then brought forward into the summary sheet that I previously showed you, populating the technical side of it, then again, bringing forth the 47 and the 16. Again, those are out of a 50-point score. If we were to normalize to 100-point score, like maybe we're more familiar with from school, 90 to 100 being an A, well, 47 times 2 normalized to 100 gives you 94. 16 times 2 normalized to 100 gives you 32. Second part of the evaluation has to do with the cost proposal, and this was done after the technical review. Again, we had two proposals submitted. American Construction had the low cost, $4.3 million, and they received all of the points that were valuable for that category of 50. The other one bid we had was the $7.5 billion from Pacific Pile, and based on our pro-radiant linear distribution, they received 29 points out of 50. Those scores for the cost proposal were then brought forward and added to the technical proposal scores, and the average technical proposal score added to the cost proposal score to come up with the total score for each of the contractors respectively. And as you can see, Pacific Pile and Marine, with a total score of 76, is shown to provide the best value to the city under this process here, where American Construction received 66 points. As Fred said, we then took that back to EMD, made sure that they were still incurring with the process. And as you can see here in yellow, I've highlighted, they concurred with our process of qualification, request for proposals, and the selection criteria. Then, they further said that based on the results of the process for both the cost and technical scores, they accept the project should be awarded to Pacific Pile and Marine. So, based upon the evaluation of the technical and cost scores, using our previously-developed evaluation criteria, Pacific Pile and Marine was determined by the project team to provide best value to the City of Anacortes, and we have concurrence of that award from EMD. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I appreciate that. And I hope council also appreciates the detail of that presentation, because you might imagine, when they brought forth something to me that was a $7 million and a $4 million proposal, I said, "You better have a really good reason and back it up if you want to bring it to council and have them decide on that." So, anyway, I'll just throw that commentary in it. And did you have anything else to add to that, Mr. Buckmeyer?
You're being very polite in your...
All right. Mr. Young, I think?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Miller. Just out of curiosity, though, I looked at the metrics that were used, just the, you know, quality, those issues that are necessary to make a determination as to which person may serve the interest of our city to its best, and also looking at just all the things that we thought was important. But in that metrics, it was like a 50-point, it was a, you got the maximum amount of points for price, and then, and so, that difference between the two, could you quantify that just a little bit? You know, although I agree, I guess what I'm looking... You know, although I agree, I guess what I'm looking for is if I gave a low price, let's say $4 million for the same services as someone that's proposing that cost is $7 million, the question I would have is what are the differences? And I think that that's what Mr. Miller sort of alluded to in his statement. So if you elaborate just a little bit on that, just for the public as well, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Webb, do you want to take that detailed level of question, or do you want me to handle it, buddy?
Either way, however you prefer, Mr. Buckenmeyer. Go ahead, and I'll happy to fill in after you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, good. So the difference is basically in the technical proposal, right? I mean, the cost was one element of what we looked at, but not, not the entire equation, right? So Pacific Pile and Marine put forth a far superior technical proposal, proving to us that they could, they could do the work, and American just didn't, just didn't get there for us.
Yeah, I get that, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mr. Buckenmeyer, truly not. I guess what I was looking for, just a little bit more detail, if we have a metrics that says we will award 50 points based upon price, that assumption is that it's apples-to-apples, oranges-to-oranges, but in this case, they were, one was offering a different price point than the other, and I was just curious if there was some, you know, standout reason why one would be roughly $3 million more or one would be $3 million less, offering the same thing.
I can see, I see the question now, thank you. And I don't know, Mr. Rob, do we have the bid proposals there so they can take a look at the differences between the two, the two cost proposals for each one of them?
I don't have the two of them side by side here at the moment in a, let me hold on a second, let me just bring up a different screen.
Why are you doing that? I guess, you know, in the, I totally get, I just want to say for the record, I totally understand the earlier metrics of ability to do the job, the quality of work that's being done, just the overall history of working with a reputable company that can deliver the best possible product for our city at the best possible cost. I just wanted to see if there was any outlier that jumps out. You don't have to go into any great details, but I just thought that would be important.
Yeah, and we can get that for you in a few minutes, or I can give you that to you later.
You can do that to me later, but...
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was kind of the main point of putting up the spreadsheet as far as the individual qualifications and the significant difference in the different, the different areas that were scored by the experts, and, and not that it matters, but I will remind the public and the council, it is going to be funded through FEMA, but we, I know we are all stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and again, which is why I said you better have a really good explanation of why it's that way. And I think the spreadsheet helps lay that out pretty, pretty clearly for me, but yeah, it's a good question to ask.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckenmeyer, did you want to see the tabulated bids? Is that what you were looking for, the comparison line by line?
Mayor, your discretion. Would you like to see that level of detail?
If you can pull them up briefly.
Thank you.
Let's see, I'm trying to hear. Hold on, let me...
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
There we go.
Thank you. In the meantime, I was just going to pipe up and say, it's pretty exciting to see that the technical score of Pacific Pile was so, so high that that gives me reassurance.
And, yeah, me as well, because the last thing you want is a $2 million contract mod, you know, halfway through the project. But anyway, okay, Mr. Webb.
Here is the detailed breakdown of the bids, line item by line item. I'm trying to get it here in a size that's fits on the screen and is also legible for everyone.
There you go.
So you can see we had at the end of the day 13 bid items. One item was canceled because of the layout of the project as time unfolded, and construction in 2021 became impossible, so there was no need for line item 13. So here you can see we have 13 bid items remaining from mobilization through the various technical items. In the left-hand column here, we have the engineer's estimate. This was a bottom-up engineer's estimate based on staffing, materials, production rates, et cetera, to build the job, and engineers rate, or engineer's estimate was $6.2 million, not including tax. The second bid that we had was the one from American Construction, and you can see that they were generally low bid. Orange is the color of the low number for all three columns. And you can see that they were low on many of the items, significantly low. They were also $2 million-plus dollars lower than the engineer's estimate without tax. Third bid was from Pacific Pile. Their numbers kind of danced around, high, medium, low, but at the end of the day, they were about $700,000, 10.9% higher than the engineer's estimate.
What was so important about this and wanting it to be shown is that not only does it show that our estimate, but it also showed how close we were with Pacific Pile and Marine and then the other company. But I just thought it was just interesting to the public to show that difference in how it, our engineering estimates come as close as it did to showing what the actual costs are. So it wouldn't benefit us just to go to a low bid if we don't have the quality of what we want produced. It would be a waste of money. So in that case, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any other questions from council? Any action from council?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
In the light of everything that we've learned this evening, I move that the city council authorize you to sign contract number 20032 SEW0081 with Pacific Pile and Marine in the amount of $7,567,366.40 for the wastewater treatment plant outfall relocation marine phase.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve the contract as stated. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the detailed presentation. Okay, moving on to item 7C, display of the Russian flag. This is a discussion item. I'm gonna, I know this is not an item that came from the executive branch, although I offered it up at last week's council meeting. I'll do a quick intro and then turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Walters. So 6C, as everyone knows, council and councils aware, several citizens reached out in the last few days in reference to the Russian flag at our Two Sister City Gateway displays. Last council meeting, I stated my commitment to the peaceful mission of a sister city organization, and that's coming from a perspective from a combat veteran and a veteran of the Cold War. I did not, at the time, reference the fact that I was trained to drop non-conventional weapons on the former Soviet Union, where our sister city now resides, under a Russian flag. And I am proud of my small contribution of bringing down that evil empire that flew the hammer and sickle flag in early 1990s. I did state, if council wishes to take action on this, they certainly can, and they have. Council members Walters, Moulton, and McDougal have brought this to tonight's agenda. I think like everyone I know in Anacortes, we are appalled by the naked aggression of the Russian government led by Vladimir Putin on their neighbor country of Ukraine. We have all been inspired by the resistance of Ukraine. One of my obligations is to provide as much info to council to help make the best decision on any issue, and as we have no diplomats or military strategists on staff, you might get Matt, a former career warrior and naval officer. Naval officers were the world's first diplomats. I know 6C included some media reports, but I think it should probably include some media reports of Russian citizens protesting the atrocious acts by their government, and then many of them being locked up for that. Last week, I still believe millions of people in Russia despise what their government is doing, and many have recently been jailed for saying that in public. And I also believe that they might love their flag, too. As may I have received a grand total of 14 emails, and I'll read two of them that I think kind of summarize both sides of the issue, four phone calls and a couple of letters. And then in the interest of, again, providing what, I couldn't find any more information on definitions of flag, but once I'm done talking, I'm going to turn it over to council. "Representation of a large body of people associated with a particular territory that is sufficiently conscious of its unity, aggregation of persons of the same ethnic family, often speaking the same language or cognate languages." And one email I received today, no, a couple days ago. "It's absolutely disgusting, disappointing that the Anacortes proudly flies the Russian flag as you enter town. You need to remove this immediately and replace it with the Ukrainian flag. Elections are coming up, and we don't want to refer to you as comrade Matt. Do the right thing now." And then another one. "I understand there's been some concern over the Russian flags flying on or within our city. I for one like to see the flag continue to fly out of respect for the Russian people, most of whom have no idea what their leadership is doing in Ukraine and only wish for peace. As a citizen of Anacortes who has extended family in Moscow, I can assure you that they neither support their leadership or this war. Taking the flags down would be symbolic of turning our backs on the very people who hopefully one day will have the opportunity to change this terrible regime." Okay, so that's, that's enough for me. Sorry, council, this is your item. Mr. Walters, over to you.
Council members, Moulton and McDougal and I put this item in the packet simply to provide some space for council to discuss the question of whether we should continue to fly the Russian flag at our Two Sister City displays out in the community, but then also behind me here in the council chambers, we've had a number of people reach out to us to take down the flag. Some people have reached out to ask us to sever our sister city relationship with the city of Lomonosov. And I don't think that I've heard any council member advocate that course of action, and I think for the three of us who put this item in the packet, we think that that would be precisely the wrong response for the reasons that are articulated in the resolution back in 2001, I think it was, where we adopted or authorized an agreement to create the sister city, 1992 actually, 30 years ago, to create that sister city relationship. We noted then that the cities of Anacortes and Lomonosov were motivated by a strong desire to establish friendly ties and cultural cooperation between our cities, and are convinced that sister city relations contribute significantly to the cause of peace and mutual understanding. And since there's no real debate about that, or there hasn't been, maybe we can move on to just the question of the flag. Seems to me that that's, that that question is driven by what people in our community feel in a visceral sense for the people of Ukraine, who are the recipients of this unprovoked attack by Russian forces. I, I think I feel it, too. We've, we've had people offer to personally fund the purchase of Ukrainian flags. We've talked briefly about the idea of maybe we should fly the Ukrainian flag somewhere, maybe we should replace all of our flags at our display on Highway 20 with Ukrainian flags. There are a variety of ways to approach this problem, but maybe some of the hesitancy around removal of the Russian flag might be because we're looking past the Russian targeting of civilians, of cultural sites, of nuclear power plants now, of the use of cluster bombs, all of which shocked the conscience, are violations of public international law, all of which are being done under the banner of the Russian flag. The Russian flag, I suppose, is the flag of the Russian people, but it's also the flag of the state of Russia. And so it does, in fact, upset me to be sitting in this chair right in front of it. So I'd invite any other discussion that people are, are interested in having on this topic.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
As you mentioned, we've heard from many of our constituents, with the vast majority being in favor of our removing the flag from our city displays, one of the letters we received is helpful to me in the way it describes flags as symbols and the way that they demonstrate a community's identity and values. And I feel that flying the Russian flag that is currently on the tanks that are attacking people unprovoked and having 1.4 million of those people as of yesterday fleeing their country as a result, I want to, I would advocate for taking the flags off city displays currently.
Mr. McDougal.
I feel similarly to Mr. Walters and Ms. Moulton. I also wanted to add, though, that we, to really reiterate, that if we were to take such an action, it is because we're seeing, or at least in my mind, seeing the flag as a symbol of the state, the Russian Federation, the government that has done this, and not a symbol of our friends in Lomonosov. Like, our sister city's relationship will absolutely be preserved, and that, that relationship itself is the symbol of our friendship with that community. That's, that's how I'm looking at it.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm sorry, there was one que, if the council should decide to take it down, if you can start thinking about what factors would bring the flag back up. So I like to try to figure out what the, what the end game is. And I know I have, if no one on council wants to jump off, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to public comment here shortly. Mr. Young?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter?
Okay, Mr. Carter, and then Mr. Young, and then I know I have members of the public that want to talk on this issue. Don't worry, I'll give everybody a shot. Mr. Carter?
I was also just curious about the wooden sister city sign by the flag on Highway 20. Should we also carve the Russian flag off there or leave that one as is, as part of this?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'd like council to consider the fact that not only do we have physical flags, full-size traditional flags, but we have many, many Russian flags adorning city hall and other areas. So, okay, Mr. Young?
Yes. You know, not to discredit emotion. Emotion is important. Emotion allows us to choose who we choose to represent us as people. Emotion allows us to decide who we want to love, how we want to live, where we want to live, and what we want to do. So I don't always, I like adding in emotion when you add it to facts. At the end of the day, you know, I think our sister city relationship, you know, will always be strong, but symbolically, it's also important that we send a message because, you know, again, as a society, if we look the other way to aggression and wrongs that go unanswered, we as a society lose. And, and we cannot be impartial, particularly when you have heinous crimes that are taking place. That just goes clearly across boards. I would hate to sort of say to our sister city, we don't care about you, but what we're saying in lowering or removing this particular flag at this time, what we're also saying to the world and our sister city, the government's action that's taking place is something we very much vehemently disagree with. So sometimes there are those times when we really do have to make a strong stand, and it doesn't mean that we don't care about you. I guess in my house, we call it tough love, and so, and in this... And so, and in this case, I, I agree that it is time that we do something to symbolize what the sentiment is about it as it continues to go. There are additional things that we could do, such as even in changing the light on even the Eagle's Nest coming in. I'm just saying, if we can show that symbolism to our population, too, as well, that this is what we really mean and we support this, I think it's also helpful. So just removing the flag is only one component, but I think that there's more that we can do. I love the idea of lighting up City Hall for at least a couple of days and, you know, those colors. It would be wonderful. Anyway, I, I agree. Thank you.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Well, and interestingly, Ukraine's colors are also sort of the city of Anacortes's colors. I, I also think it's important to keep in mind, as others have mentioned, that ordinary Russians are being hurt by these sanctions, their, by their own government. I reached out to a friend of mine, an American citizen from Russia that lives right here in town. The attack itself upon Ukraine has caused them pain, but also the sanctions, the interest rates, the inflation, the economic devastation that is going to be wrought upon Russia is going to hurt their family back in Russia. I think ordinary Russians need our support as well. It's very different from the level of support that Ukrainians need. But also that ordinary Russians in the United States should not face harassment because of what their nation of their heritage is doing. And, you know, we, we honestly nothing in the United States like what we saw of Asian Americans because of COVID. None of that crap should happen as a result of this, and that is not the point of, I think, doing anything to take down that flag. The flag is the, the flag of the state. We ought not to show anything that supports that state.
Okay, I think it's probably a good time to open it up to public comment, and I have one online, since I, I see it, I'm going to go ahead and go to the online hand-up, and I know I've got some folks signed up here in City Hall as well. So Jack Curtis has your hand raised. You're, you're on for three minutes, is what counsel says I'm allowed to give you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, are you able to hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Great, thank you very much. Hey, I appreciate you presenting the two emails that you got this week. I will read quickly because I think it's important to present the body of another email that is in favor of removing the flag. The one that you presented was a bit curt, so I'd like to offer a few more points, and I know each of you receive these in your inbox, but I think it's important for the record. So last week, both yourself, Mr. Mayor, as well as two community members who were invited to speak, made a compelling case to continue flying the Russian Federation's flag. I agree with that collective assessment in so much that any grievance the community may have likely is not with the members of the sister-city. Anacortes shares a long and proud history of friendship with all of its sister-cities, and any potential decision to remove the Russian flag from around the city most definitely will not bring an end to the tragedy taking place across Ukraine. I don't believe anybody is foolish enough to believe that. While each of those ideas that I just mentioned that were addressed last week all have merit, they also miss a larger point, and I appreciate Ms. Moulton bringing this up. Symbols like flags help to demonstrate a community's identity and values. We can look to the southern states and their decision about where and when to fly the Confederate flag. States across that region decided that symbol no longer accurately reflected their values, and they made appropriate changes. The city of Anacortes has an opportunity to make a decision with respect to the Russian flag, and in doing so, demonstrate our values and our priorities. The easy answer in this situation, and I think the one that was suggested last week, was that this is an international issue. This is not something that should impact our ability to fill potholes or address stormwater. This is not something for small-town leadership. I believe that perspective also misses the mark. Now, let's be honest, will removing the Russian Federation flag from around the city suddenly bring this ongoing war to a close? Of course it won't. But will removing the Russian Federation flag from public places cost you anything? I don't believe it will. Symbolism is a critical aspect of public leadership, as it offers an opportunity to reinforce the ideas and the values that we hold dear, both of the leader and of those led. Currently, the Russian flag is flying over tanks, flying on aircraft, and being one of the uniforms of Russian soldiers, unfortunately, many of whom are conscripted to commit illegal acts across Ukraine. You've read my suggestion, my suggestion, I believe. I can summarize very quickly in the sake of time, is to communicate very clearly with our friends in Lominozov, to let them know that our grievance is not with them, that we value their friendship and that we value the relationship that we've had with them for a very long time. However, it is currently untenable for us to continue flying the Russian flag, not only in our city, our two ports of entry, really, if you will, on 20 and at the ferry landing, but also right behind you in City Hall, where we practice our democracy as a small community. I believe that flag should come down. I offered no opinion, nor do I now, about whether that should be permanent or temporary. I believe the council is more than capable of holding that conversation. Finally, I'll close by reminding, this is not a matter of cancel culture. This is not something that should be so easily, easily dismissed as political correctness run amok. Mr. Mayor, I 100% agree with you. Last week, when you said that it is tragic that many in our society have no longer been able to appreciate nuance, I, I do agree with you in almost all cases. However, in this case, I believe the difference between right and wrong is so clear as to preclude the need for much nuance analysis. I believe removing the Russian Federation's flag is simply the right thing to do. I deeply appreciate you giving me the time. I probably went over. I appreciate the opportunity to communicate with the committee, excuse me, with the council and the community. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks a lot. Okay, in council chambers, I have signed up Tom Kuker. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing it correctly. K-U-K-E-R. Yep. Do you want to speak? Okay. You, you don't have to, you're signed up, and I'm, and I'm going to give you three minutes, and I won't start the clock until you're, until you're ready to, ready to go. state your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Kuker, 3809 West 11th.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
I didn't catch the name of the individuals on before.
Uh, Jack, go ahead. Yeah, we'll, we'll have that in the record.
What I wanted to say was I agree with his, with his analysis. Previously, my wife and I sent messages to the city council, as well as to the Honorable Governor of the State of Washington, stating to Russian flags at the entry points that our city should be removed due to the Russians' unprovoked, we've talked about this inhumane and brutal invasion of the peaceful nation of Ukraine. Further, we believe that our sister-city's relationship with the Russian city should be severed or placed in a hiatus status, to be revisited upon the resolution of the conflict, and that a communication from Anacortes officials be directed to the city there, and I think that's what Jimmy was talking about earlier, detailing the reason for the action. We do not take issue, when I say we, it's my wife and I are talking to the council, with, with the city sisters program in Anacortes. We are and continue to be impressed with their program and have donated to their cause. We understand their desire to continue with this status quo, however, we believe that we must take action in attempt to make a difference. Simply removing flags is not enough unless it's tied to an action which would be to notification of the sister-city in Russia why we are doing it. Since the horrific invasion, our city, state, federal government, and private enterprises have been severing ties with Russian and Putin, as the mayor had said. In Saturday, in Sunday's Times, Seattle Times Magazine, it's quite an article about, and I have it, that's about all of the different corporations, all of the different things that people are doing to sever ties with Russia and why. Quite a long article. If you haven't read it, I would recommend you, you do it. We learn of more actions being taken on a daily basis, actions which squeeze Russia and Putin into a corner. Those actions seem to be working. Our governor is well aware of the effects of these actions and is, and describes it as putting a brick around Russia and Putin. He stated that if our state can put one brick in the wall, that would be a good thing. That's why he instructed all state agencies to cut the ties with Russia. He also stated all Washingtonians should be outraged by both Russia's unprovoked and destructive actions on Ukraine. We should be outraged and do what we can to make a difference, as I've said. Sunday, my wife and I took a trip out to the, out to the countryside. We went to Skagit Regional Airport area in Burlington. We stopped at a water tank bakery, picked up some ginger molasses cookies. We also purchased a loaf of bread, rye bread. Here's where it gets, well, it's, it's difficult to talk about this thing, and it was really difficult when this happened to us at the, at this bakery. They handed us a note about the money that we just paid for the bread. And the note reads, "As winter lifts, our hearts are torn over what is happening in Ukraine. Like many throughout the world, we feel compelled to do something. From now on, at least until March 16th, 100% of our rye bread sales will be donated to the World Kitchen, World Central Kitchen. They currently provide fresh meals on the border of Poland and Ukraine." As a matter of fact, today, I received an email from them that says that they not only are in Poland, in, Poland and Ukraine, but they're in Romania, as of today, Moldova, and Hungary, feeding the folks that need feeding, that have just come across into their territories. We can make a difference, but we have to do something. That something is remove the flag, tell the cities why we're doing it, and that is the action that I think we can take as a city with that relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've got John Lovrick signed up, and I, I see you got your hand raised, so, okay, yeah, you can go ahead. John's deferring to you, Mr. Thurber, I believe.
Doug Thurber, Anacortes, and I apologize for not signing up, but I understood the meeting was supposed to start at seven, but I will be better informed next time.
You made it.
I had the opportunity for ten years to work on numerous ships in North America, Central America, Asia, and during those ten years, I had an opportunity to interact with numerous people from the Ukraine, crew members and officers. And my impression is that these people are kind and friendly people. I'm sure there's numerous kind and friendly people in Russia also, but a flag is the symbol of a nation and not individuals that live there necessarily. And that nation is in disgrace right now, and so I ask you to remove the flag because they, they should be shamed as a nation, not individual citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. John Lovrick.
John Lovrick, 4811 Cypress Drive, Anacortes, also president of Sister City Association. I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate public comment. I actually do know both Tom and Mr. Thur, Thurfer. And I appreciate, I appreciate their comments, you know, and we all want, I think, the same thing, actually. We don't, we don't approve of Russians' actions, the Russian government actions, I should say. And we, you know, we, we're here to support and help the Ukrainian people. The same way, you know, where my wife is from, Romania, I get, I get international news from, from them, which a lot of stuff we don't see here. So we, we know how many tents are being put up, how many families they're supporting and things like that. So in that regard, you know, I, I completely, we're all on the same side, as far as that goes. I don't know that severing ties, you know, with our relationship would be proving anything to the Russian government or, or Putin. I don't, I don't think he cares less on what goes on between his sister-cities and the country, because his, his, his plan has something other to do than that. You know, in the same, you know, Mayor, Mr. Mayor got about 14 emails or so, which I think on the big scheme of things isn't, isn't a lot. I would think that he would be overwhelmed with voicemails and emails and all sorts of things if, if our community of over 17,000 people were that, you know, bothered by driving by on, on the highway and seeing the flag. So, you know, we're, we're really, we, we don't want to punish the people that we've been friends with for 30 years. We do feel that we want to support them. We understand it is kind of a, I guess, a double-edged sword when a flag represents the people and it represents the, the, the government that's fighting. You know, even though soldiers probably, I, I want to say, there's a lot of soldiers that are doing stuff they don't want to do because they would be otherwise killed if they don't follow those orders. So, you know, I think most of this is falling on the hands of one, one man. You know, the blood, the blood started with one man, on one man's hands. But I want to read a little message that I didn't have last week from a Sister Cities International president in Washington, D.C., and his name is Leroy Alala. Dear fellow citizen diplomats, witnessing the horrific events of the past week in Ukraine, leaders in our communities instinctively and understandably want to say something to do, want to say something, to do something, and to act towards a collective disapproval of this assault on humankind endeavoring to make a positive difference at the critical juncture in our global discourse. Yet, suspending or ending a sister-city relationship with a Russian sister-city partner should not be one such action. As citizen diplomats, we must be alert to council and remind our elected officials, as well as our local municipal leaders, of the critical role that Sister Cities International and each local sister-city relationship offers, especially in times of conflict. We applaud those sister-city programs and citizens around the globe, including Russia, who have voiced their support of an independent Ukraine and reaffirm their belief in peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation. While suspending or ending a sister-city relationship to register disapproval of a foreign government's actions may seem, on the surface, like a positive policy protest action, it has the complete opposite effect, closing a vital and oftentimes last channel of communication with vulnerable or isolated populations. As a result, we reemphasize and underscore that our policy remains to encourage our members and U.S. communities to keep their sister-city relationship active, especially now when political issues and actions of the day threaten to disrupt the positive and constructive relationships that have been made over many years at the people-to-people and the community-to-community levels. We ask each of you to reaffirm this policy in all your interactions within your communities. Should you have any questions or need any assistance, please contact Sister Cities International headquarters, and thank you for continued support of Sister Cities International and our and our mission to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual and one community at a time. Sincerely, Leroy Alala, President and CEO of Sister Cities International, Washington, D.C. I also just want to say, we've put this letter up on our website, our Anna Cordes Sister City website. We've also had, put some links. There've been King Five News, short news thing that they did, and some, just some other things to help educate the public on where we stand and why we have the opinion that we do have. So I appreciate your time, and please, you know, check out our website, go to the flag pavilions if you haven't been there. I know certain city councils had questions about signage and how is it represented, and it is hard to see it if you're going 55 miles an hour on the highway. And, you know, that park is really meant to stop and enjoy the area and learn something about those flags. Because a lot of people, they don't, they don't know what each city would mean. You know, if we had a flag of the city of El Luka, which has a dove on it, people would say, what country is that? So, you know, we really want to respect and show those countries, and then more in-depth questions can be asked. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lovrick. Okay, anybody else here in council chambers?
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Second week in a row, that's a record for me, to share a few thoughts about this very important discussion that we're having. First thing I want to do is just share an email trail that I've had in the last few days. The gentleman that, I don't, I didn't recognize his name, don't know who he is, but he, on March 4, he sent this email through our Sister Cities website. "The Anna Cordes Sister City organization is a great thing. I support you 100%, but under the current situation in Ukraine, do you think it is a good thing to fly the Russian flag at the two entrances to our city? I respectfully request you remove them until the situation is resolved. I would hope the citizens of Lomonosov would agree with me." So I responded. "Thank you for your email to Anna Cordes Sister Cities. I have to say that your message was the most thoughtful and respectful message that we have received regarding this issue," and I appreciate that. "If I hadn't been an ASCA member for 24 years, 10 years as president, I would support your requests. However, your last sentence regarding the citizens of Lomonosov is what drives my perspective. We've stayed in their homes, they've stayed in our homes, we've enjoyed each other's culture, food, history, and most importantly, long friendships. A fundamental point in this discussion is knowing who or what is represented by the Russian flag. Is it the citizens of Russia, 150 million of them, who are overwhelmingly opposed to Putin's tyranny, and particularly his invasion of Ukraine? Or does the flag represent Putin? The flag was in place before Putin came to power, and it will be in place long after he's removed from power. I like to think that the flag represents Russia's citizens. Thank you again for your kind email." His response. "It is nice when two people can communicate on an adult level." And then he says, "I guess where we differ is who does the flag represent? Of course, it represents the people, but when Putin speaks, I see the flag behind him, and he's a cold-blooded murderer." And he finishes with, "Maybe we can meet sometime." I said to him in response, "I'd like to do that," and I invited him to the next Sister Cities meeting. I think it kind of encapsulates an honest discussion with different points of view, trying to deal with a difficult problem. My perspective, you know my perspective. I have friends, and I know how they feel about their flag, how proud they are. In fact, I want to show a couple of photos, if I can make that happen here.
All right, you are a little over time, but a couple pictures.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, he can have your time? Okay.
Uh, wait, here we go, here we go. Did I do this right? So this is a news article that appeared in a Lomonosov newspaper in 2006. This is a picture of a group who came to Anna Cordes just before that, and they're gathering around their flag, proud to be in Anna Cordes, proud of their flag. This was part of a tradition that started at some point, where every time a group came from Lomonosov to Anna Cordes, the bus stopped at the flag display. This was 2013, and the group that came, and that's where the bus stopped. They're proud of their flag, they're proud of their relationship with Anna Cordes, and I think we have to be aware of and respect that position. Third picture, last picture. Is that group standing right here? Every time a group came, not only did they want to be part of those flag displays, have their picture taken, it was an important part of their, this tradition that developed, they also were glad to be in this room, share in our culture, understand our appreciation of the flags that we have surrounding this room. So I just think it's important to remember that this is a group of people in this town who, by the way, I'm having a hard time making contact with. Remember, there are websites, there are internet services that are being shut down, and I'm waiting to see if I get a response from my primary contact in Lomonosov, so that I can just get a sense from her, how she would respond to this discussion that we're having. I think her voice would be important in this discussion. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clark. And I tell you, I share some concerns about making those contacts. I've had the media ask me if I've been contacting members in our sister city, and they don't have free speech like we do. You know, it's a very danger, you know, I'm concerned about putting them in jeopardy by, you know, either asking them or forcing them to debate like we're used to debating. I think it's very concerning.
The oversight isn't new.
Yeah, exactly.
There have been times I've been concerned that I don't, I'm not understanding exactly responses from Lomonosov, and it's because they have to be careful what they say, and they have for years. It's been ramped up a considerable amount, so we don't know. But I can tell you this, they wouldn't feel as proud of their flag if they weren't wanting to come and stand under it every time a group came, whether it's adults or students and their chaperones. And I think we just can't ignore this unique, personal, human contact in spite of horrible situation with Ukraine. I think we can do both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll make one more, one more commentary, only because it hits pretty close to home for me. You know, like I said, amateur diplomat of a couple of decades, fortunate to travel around the world many times, both in a peacemaking role and the other side. And a lot of people have been asking me, what should they do? And I say things like, well, join the military, join the diplomatic service, donate to the International Red Cause, Doctors Without Borders, things like that. And then the final personal piece, you know, I would just ask, after I turn, I'll turn it over to council debate, does it ratchet up tensions or ratchet down tensions, whatever decision the council decides to choose? And I say that as a father of somebody who also lives in Anna Cordes and is very shortly going to be deploying to the European theater, so just if you'd think about that as well. Yes, he's on active military duty. So, council, over to you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah. I want to say thank you for all of you folks coming and speaking previous week and this week, and also Jack Curtis for his letter and speaking online today. I think this Sister Cities has been an incredible organization. I think they are citizen-to-citizen diplomats. I've been able to participate in some of the fundraising efforts. I have friends who participated and went to Japan when we were students, and I hope that, you know, the next generation is able to do so. I think that the point that I have trouble with is the sign, you know, I'm looking back here at the back, and we've got our Anna Cordes Sister City signs and informational boards. I think those are fantastic. I think the signs that are at the entryway of both from the ferries that come and from in on Highway 20 absolutely show, tell a story of how we've built relationships around our world and the importance of that, of the citizen-to-citizen relationship. I think my challenge is when I look behind us and we have the Russian flag, while it does represent all of those wonderful people, it is also the flag that is being flown as it invades another country. And folks are being torn apart by families, history, their culture is being torn apart, and it was unprovoked. So, while I don't need to discuss that, because we are not, you know, in a United Nations project, I do have a problem when I look up there and the other countries such as Japan, Croatia, Canada, and the U.S. are standing shoulder to shoulder with the Russian flag currently. We're here doing our small d democracy, representing our community, and that's where I have a real issue temporarily, until something is resolved, that I, and I can understand the sister city component, but I think for the general public, when they see the context of the flag up there with the other flags, that's when, unfortunately, they don't have that, and so it means something different to them, and we have to understand how each, how it can be interpreted in different ways. So that's where I stand on things. I don't want it to regress, I don't want to be disheartening to our friends in Lomonosov, but I do have a problem when we're, when we talk about, you know, what we stand for. And I think that, yes, you know, that the Russian citizens have been under Putin, there has always been some pretty difficult aspects of his rule, but this is an extreme that has built not just from, in the last couple of weeks, but I've come to this over the last seven days, and I do not feel comfortable, at least at this point, having that up, having that flag there with the other flags.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I just wanted to thank everyone that's spoken, and I just wanted to put out there that I don't feel that taking the flag down will make a difference on what's going on, but it will make a difference of the citizens of Anna Cordes in how we show our support for things. And so I just wanted to say that I agree with the rest of the council that has spoken, and I feel that our sister city partners will, or I believe that they would understand why, and especially, like, if the roles were reversed, we would understand why they would take our flag down in the same situation. So I don't think it'll destroy any relationships we have, but it will make a difference here for the people that live here and how we show our support in what's going on, or lack of support of what's going on.
Mr. Walters.
I agree with the distinction that Ms. Cleveland McGrath draws between the displays, like the sign back here on the wall, and flying the flag itself. I think that's a useful distinction. I think that the displays help convey actual information about the Sister City Association, about our sister cities. I appreciate the comments from the Sister City Association. I completely agree with the importance of the program, of the concept of that project. My family hosted a student from Kisakata, Japan. I went to Kisakata. It was my first international travel other than Canada, probably to our other sister city in Canada. It was eye-opening, it was life-changing, it helped build lifelong friendships, and if Japan invaded its neighbor, I would argue that we should be taking down its flag. I really can't imagine flying Japan's flag here in Anna Cordes during World War II, for example, if we'd had the program then. I do think all of these little measures matter. None of them by themselves will break the bears back, obviously, but they're all important to the isolation of Russia, to ostracizing Russia, the state, from the international community. And we've seen that in all the things that have happened. The world has rallied, our political parties and the United States have rallied, they've come together because it's so clear why, who the bad actor is in this situation. I don't think we need to put any of our friends in Lomonosov at risk by soliciting their feedback, but we could easily communicate to them what we intend if we take down the Russian flag.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I know we're being asked to do something difficult, but atrocities that happen around the world are not things just because it's not happening to us directly. That means that we, don't require us to also participate as a civilized society in symbolically in showing our support. And we do have to take stands that are difficult sometimes. It's never, you know, there's never really an instance I can think of whereas to stand on truth and what's right and just to help our society move forward, it may not cause a little bit of pain on the other side. But I think our sister cities, you know, just knowing that the people whom we support, not necessarily the government and its policies, you know, there's a political argument and there's also a human argument that we have to make. So, you know, and I'm in full agreement, I'm not sure where we go from here tonight, if we're asking council to make some decision about what we want to do with it tonight, if that's the question we are. I think we've had, at least I have had, more than enough discussion about it to decide how I want to go. I'm absolutely hoping that we can also put a couple of, you know, colored lights to hit, you know, the city or the sign or the eagle's nest, or wherever we do that, to send a signal to our town that we hear you, we agree with you, and atrocity is an atrocity, and we're going to stand with good people all over the world as we take action to say, "Not again. We're not going to allow it." So tell us what we could do.
Yeah, no, I can, I can help you with that, and, because I think I've heard certainly, and I'll not, I will certainly let everybody on council that wishes to speak, but I think the action would be for, I think I heard the flags being, the majority of council would like to have the flags come down, and if, maybe if Mr. Walters, I think he had the lead on this one, write a resolution, and we can put that together and bring it on the consent agenda, because I do believe we've heard enough information from everybody, appreciating the comments, and I think we could go forward from there.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Moulton.
Oh, thanks. So we had prepared for this moment. So I agree that we, I would like to follow up next week with a written resolution explaining our action and expressing support for both our sister cities and Ukraine, but we also should take action tonight. So I move that, in the opinion of the city council, the Russian flag should be removed from all city displays without delay.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. McDougal, to remove the Russian Federation flag from our, all our displays, the proper flags. A motion, a second. Ms. Hunt, will you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you for the lively and interesting debate, and again, I think we're all with the Ukrainian people.
If I can add just one more thing?
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I'm hoping that as we go forward to next week, we also look at a way that we can just sort of, that symbolic display of the color of lights, as they've done it in New York and other cities, really is a calming effect on the community as a whole, and it's symbolic, and it really doesn't cost much at all. So I would hope that we would also consider something like that and where we can also do that within the city.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further business for the council? With no further business, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.